Good morning, we'll call the meeting to order. First item on our agenda is approval of our agenda for the day.
I approve.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries, citizens to be heard. Any citizens that would like to be heard today? Saying none. Approval of bills and vouchers.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the bills and vouchers. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. Departmental update, regional extension. Ben Anderson, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Ben. Well, thanks for the time. I'll kind of, this handout I gave you is kind of something I think you can keep in your back pocket that kind of gives an overview of where we're at with our staff and our programming for kind of a little bit of a recap of last year and where we're going this year as well. So, I'll start with 4H, I mean, that's a large focus of ours, of course. Lisa Kassenbauer is here today, too, she's our full-time 4H program coordinator. We're, like Frank mentioned at the committee meeting last week, we did a really good interview for our halftime position, and we're taking steps to finalize that, so we hope to have that announced pretty soon with that position. So, we have, looking at kind of our traditional community clubs and then kind of our additional work we do in 4H, we have ten community clubs across the county that you can see listed there. I think it's pretty, covers a lot of the communities within the county, and you can see the numbers of the youth and the volunteers that we have there as well. Volunteers, of course, really keep this program going for us and help us in a lot of ways. So, each of these community clubs, they'll have, you know, about six meetings across the year where they focus on education and training, recreation activities for the kids, other ways of engagement for the families. We also do, for youth and families that are interested in getting into things a little more specifically, we have our project clubs and teams listed there. And, so, these kind of fit the needs of the county, we can kind of develop these in any way based on the interest of the youth and the families. We're looking at adding, there's some interest to add additional ones, too. We've been talking with the local gardening club to create a garden project club as well. And then, I think the horse and livestock knowledge bowls, those are kind of the traditional ones that we have, but people in the county are also interested in adding a dog and a rabbit one as well. So, it's good to see those developments.
Is the shooting sports one still active?
Yep.
I don't know if years ago it was really playing quite well.
It is, yep, it's still going well, that's one of our largest growing programs across the state. We've been fortunate, too, to have the state shoot in Alexandria, pretty close by, within our region. In addition to kind of that traditional 4H programming, we do a lot of extra things as well, so, on the next page, we have, we offer various project days where, we usually do these at the family service center, like on a Saturday, for example, we'll set up a lot of different projects and activities that kids can do, from crocheting and sewing to healthy eating, to woodworking and other projects like that. We also see a large growth in our STEM, our science, technology, engineering and math work, that's a growing project area in 4H, so we do different things related to that. And then also, classes related to art projects, and one kind of livestock committee that keeps busy for us is our horse committee, so they'll offer different project days and educational workshops for youth. The halftime position that we have in the county, that's going to focus on our after-school work, and that's the next section. So, the plan is that we would be doing six weeks of educational programming in schools across the county, and that reaches two to three hundred youth. This position has a STEM focus, too, and that was something that we did last year that we'll continue to build on within the schools and through Morehead Parks and Rec as well. We also offer a lot of, you know, 4H is, it's not a lot of, we give the youth a lot of opportunities to lead themselves, that's the main point of it in the end. So, we have various leadership development workshops for them that we hold. One of them mentioned here, Building Leadership and Understanding, Blue, we kind of have these themed by colors, and that one was just held in Morehead this past weekend where we had youth from across the region come in, and they get various leadership and organizational training, ways to facilitate things. Then we, of course, have a lot of other opportunities, just serving in the clubs and serving as ambassadors. Green Team is a leadership group at the fair that kind of helps facilitate things there. So, then our county fair, you know, that's our big showcase, of course. We're, we like the facilities we have in Barnesville, it's a great setup for us right in the center of the fairgrounds, so we're looking forward to that in July. One thing we're planning to do this year is to have more hands-on learning experiences in the 4H building. We know that a lot of people just come out to the fair to see the projects and the animals, and so we're trying to do more things in there to get people in the county engaged. So, we have pretty great statistics and turnout with our county fair, we had, last year we had two hundred forty-four youth show, two hundred ninety animal exhibits and almost sixteen hundred non-animal exhibits. And then, almost ninety youth from the county went on to the state fair and then other state competitions that we have, including the state shoot and the horse show and so on. Related to horticulture and agriculture, that's Randy Nelson, he's the full-time educator that we have here in the county. He has a couple of research trials planned for this spring. The first one is going to be a grape trial in Holly, he's going to look at nine different varieties, and these are all, you know, ones that he finds that will work well in our climate and our environment. So, he basically does further tests and trials and research on these to see which ones will continue to work well and fit the interest of people here. And then he'll continue with the Rose Trials and Dilworth at the park there, and those kind of have the same purposes in terms of finding things that work well with our climates. He also started, last year, a community program called the Home Garden Series with one of his counterparts at NDSU, and they held two sessions so far, we had over a hundred people attend, and they're planning on two more. They split these up between the Family Service Center and then NDSU. So, these focus on vegetable and flower production for home gardeners, so we've had good turnout at those, good media coverage of them as well. Our master gardeners are, continue to be active, and one partnership that we have here specific to you is their work on the county or the courthouse grounds. They're going to continue that, they're looking, they've been talking with Joe and Brian about adding some trees as well to the grounds, so we're working on that. And Randy's also assisting with a project that our dean of extension has supported related to food systems and local food production, and so he's going to be helping with some economic research related to those things, in small and medium-sized farms. In our regional office on the crops, education and research section that I have there, this is some of the work that Phil Gugosa does, he's our crops educator, and some of this Randy partners on as well. But they have, they're busy with, recently had small grains and crop improvement meetings in Morehead. Phil does a lot of work on soybean-related issues, and so a lot of that work from his research plots last year was presented at those. We also, a big aspect of our programming that our crops guys do is our private pesticide applicator training, we held that in Comstock, also in the end of January. And so, within the area, we reach about twenty-five percent of those applicators are those people that have to receive this training. And then we do various, kind of more specific things with other university researchers, the folks up in Crookston on the research center there, commodity groups and NDSU on different crop surveys and specific crop research. On the nutrition and SNAP Ed programming, this is Rosie Gonzalez, who's based in our county office here as well. Most of her work is here in the county, but she does a little bit of work in Norman and Beckher counties as well. So, her work is, she still does a lot of direct classes to improve food literacy, food access, other skills related to low-income Minnesotans. Kind of the new approach they're taking is, that's guiding a lot of their work, is the second bullet there, where it's promoting systems, environmental and policy changes to support people in making healthy choices. And so, this is where our partnership focus comes in. And you can see all those listed there that she works with across the county, it can be anything from community gardens and food shelves to other county agencies that we work with. So, our approach there is to kind of pool resources and similar programming goals with other agencies. Within our community vitality work, leadership and civic engagement, we do, one of our programs for the area that covers nineteen counties is our emerging leadership program, and this, through that, this is its thirty-first year, and it finds usually a couple that work in agriculture and that they're really active in their community in some way, and provides a lot of leadership development training for them, engagement work for communities, other skills that they can use within their work. And so, right now, the couple for this year is Matt and Teresa Halverson from Saban. They are, they have, I think, one or two sessions left, and then there's going to be a banquet on the Crookston campus on March twenty-eighth where they'll be recognized, and we also do our Red River Valley Farmer and Homemaker Award at that event as well. The very last page is just kind of an overview of the staffing that we have here, so within our county office, we have five employees. I mentioned everybody except Heather Weber, she's our new support staff at Phil Kathy Richards' position after she retired. Heather's been doing well, she's coming on about a, almost a month, I think, she's been with us. We're very happy to have her, she's jumped right in, she joined us from the Morehead Police Department. And then in our regional office, we have worked with seventeen employees now, we've been continuing to grow our staff here, and so we appreciate your support with our office space needs, and we're happy to have the opportunity to be here in Morehead and partner with the county in that way. Recently, we've added an additional youth development educator in the office, the leadership and civic engagement educator is also new, and then in June, we're having a farm business management educator start here as well. So, that's good, we're going to, I think we'll see a lot of direct programming within the county and the surrounding area because of that. I also listed our website there for our county office, we recently reformatted all our websites and updated them for the counties, so those are more functional and have a good look to them. And then I listed as well our county extension committee members, Frank, Jenny and Lori are the county representatives, and then we have five different community representatives that kind of have a connection to our programming. And then also, for your information, the statewide citizens advisory committee, that's a group that advises our dean, Bev Durgan, and our associate deans from our different centers. And Clay County's fortunate to have two people on that, Jerry Arnesson and Irene Thomas, very active in the county and with extension and 4H, so we appreciate their services, too.
Thank you. Questions for Ben?
I should just have a comment, as a Clay County 4H alumni and now a parent of 4Hers, I appreciate all that you're doing in the county, and I know Kevin can speak, that it was great years and formative years and programs for our children, so just thank you for what you're doing in our county.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
I just have one question, the, maybe Jenny can remember, I can't remember the name of, but there was a summer program that we did for several years that attracted...
The day camps?
It was like six to seven, eight hundred, nine hundred kids.
You're referring to summer survives?
Yes, that's it.
And we'll still do that, but those numbers were kind of in the after-school programs numbers, and the extra, those extra hundred cases that you're talking about are those that they used dark curtains in the far room?
I know that's, I know in the summer, they really had a lot of...
But we were successful with that last year with the half-ten person on board.
I like to see large numbers of kids involved in 4H.
Yeah.
That shows it's success, so.
That brought a good attendance to the county fair, too, did some of the programming.
Yes, okay, thank you.
I'd like to comment, too, I mean, if you're not involved with someone, I mean, if you don't go to, if you just sit in your house or whatever, if you don't get out to see what's going on, you know, you really start to realize what you guys are doing with 4H, what Randy Nelson is doing, I mean, the program that Jenny and I went to a month or so ago that he put on...
Small grains update?
Small grains, yeah, that was just great what they're doing, so.
Yep.
Like I said, there's so much going on sometimes that we don't realize it, you know, and it's just, we get into our busy lives and we don't know that you guys are doing a lot for the county, and, thank you.
Thank you.
I guess I do have one question, are your after-school programs at all focused on Barnesville? I see that Humboldt is seven times the size of some of our clubs, is that, has there been a program in Barnesville that we focused on out there?
With our community club? Is that the number you're looking at?
Right, that, well, there's eighty-six members in Humboldt now, and that's fabulous, so I was just wondering if we focused the programming?
We didn't have enough, we only had the intro person doing that, which is a program, we picked the fall room, and then hopefully when our half-ten person come through again and then we get into the Barnesville school.
So, this, their growth is not even with the school program there?
This is just the community club.
Wow.
Which is kind of large for a community club.
That's great.
It's really big.
Yeah. But it's working for them, I guess.
Great.
Usually it is, most of our community clubs are in line with the other numbers there, you know, twelve to twenty-five people.
Or twelve.
If it works.
My club's a slant.
Twelve's a good enough, too. We're focused on the kids.
Right, right.
And you look at, you know, Holly has two separate clubs within Holly.
Yep.
And Roelug in Barnesville, there's a combination one there, too.
Yep. Well, thank you.
Okay, anything else? Thanks, Ben, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Correctional facility update, Ryan Berg.
Andrew is proud. If I may, call on her for her assistance.
Good morning, Julie.
Morning, Julie.
Good morning.
Well, good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. One of the things that we're doing today is a correctional update, and I know Commissioner Campbell said that he'd like to see, he's been involved in this for all the time, starting back in '08 when a jail planning project started, and he'd like to see this move along, and he wants to make sure that you folks, and I know Chairman Wayland also wants every one of the commission to be involved in this and be updated, and so, I know he said that we should have regular updates to the board on this. So, we're kind of moving ahead with some decisions, I shouldn't say kind of, we've met twice now as a construction committee, and I think we've made a lot of progress in those two meetings, so I thought we'd go through a couple of those things today, and we'll, Mark has put together a little bit of overhead for me, and it really comes off of things that Julie and Justin, Justin Roberts, the assistant jail administrator, has also been heavily involved in looking at what we need, and they've looked at the five different options that were studied several years ago, and the committee has narrowed that to two.
Five design options.
Five design options, and now the committee has narrowed it to two, and this isn't talking about the exact design options today, but we wanted to kind of look at the layout of the campus, and if we, if we may, we'll, you can look, you follow along there, but we have it up on the screen as well. If you look at that, Mark has gone ahead and labeled the different buildings there, you see the law enforcement center and the courthouse, give you just a second to acclimate to that, the juvenile detention center, you see down in the south, and then the family service center off to the side, and then the heating plant way down in the lower left-hand What the idea is, is to lay a jail in there someplace, and if the jail is going to lay in, and that's not the next slide, but let's jump to the next slide here, if we lay a jail in, now let me go one more, right there, before we can do that, as you can see, and now that's not to scale necessarily, that's approximation, you have to understand, this is early planning stages, but if we lay a new jail in there, before we start looking at putting a structure in there and taking up that many different parking spaces, we're going to have to do something with parking around that campus. One of the options that has been discussed, this isn't finalized by any means, so, that has been discussed, is should we put a parking ramp of two or three levels right down above the parking area next to the family service center? One of the concerns that have been expressed for a few years now is the fact that there's not enough parking within the immediate area of the family service center, because out front, if you want to move out to the right side of the family service center, all that parking is for customers out there, and when we get back to the back, that's where the employees are to park, and they end up over in the courthouse parking, courthouse campus, if you see the label courthouse campus, that's by the river, there's a little bit of overflow parking back there, but, so, the idea is, if we're going to start down the road of construction, we need to know that we have room to build it, and that is going to displace the parking area that we have now, and we need to do something fairly immediate with parking. The, let you know that soil boines now have been done on that parking ramp area, that new jail area, and then you'll see later on, just to the north of the law enforcement center, some soil boines have been done, too, to see what structures we can put on that ground, that ground lies next to a river, and we need to know how far we can go up. Some of those soil boines that, and Dave Overgo from Highway Engineering coordinated that function for us, and you approved that about a couple of weeks ago to go ahead with it. So, the point being, the parking ramp really probably needs to go in first, and then, the idea is that new jail would lie right there, and if you notice that, that went right over the top of the old sheriff's garage that's on the campus, and then if you notice, there's a building off to the right of the new jail, and that is the annex it's called, it's the minimum security facility right now, the old sheriff's building. That would have to go away as well, and you'll see that in the slides as well, that that would be then reserved for future expansion. So, the idea is not just to build for today and maybe tomorrow, but for the next fifty or sixty years to allow some expansion there as well. So, again, that's the slide that shows that future expansion, and once that new jail has been constructed, then we need to vacate the jail and the, well, the jail part of it anyway for now, because that's going to be part of the new jail system. What's going to be in there in thought process is offices, laundry and the kitchen, right, Julie?
That's correct.
So, that would have to be then remodeled as soon as that new jail done. Julie feels that she can struggle through that process of, once we move the prisoners out of the jail and into the new jail, that then if we did the remodeling there, that's going to take a little bit of struggle because of the wiring and the heating units and all those things, but we'll be able to get her done, yeah. Then, the law enforcement center is way too small right now, and the committee has agreed at least to look at this in a one sweep, one planning process, although as you can see, we're going to have to do this in stages because we can't just, we can't build a parking, and we can't build a jail, and we can't remodel, and all that at one time. We have to do this in stages as we progress. Then, once that is done, if there, if we look at possibly laying a new law enforcement center to, just to the north of the current law enforcement center, and that'll take out more parking to the north of that, but before we build that, we have to make sure we know where that parking is going to go ahead of time, we have to work with the city and see where that ends up. And then, come back and probably then remodel the rest of the law enforcement center, the other half that law enforcement is in right now. Do we have plans for that? Yeah, possibly, there's been discussions about that, that you look down here at the juvenile detention center, and we've got state offices in there for parole and things of that nature that possibly could be vacated and moved over there at some time. So, as you can see, the campus fills up pretty good in that area, and we're laying at least two new buildings, we're parking areas right now, and we've identified a parking, possible parking ramp down there, but we need to explore some of the other areas of parking. Can we go south, can we go east, can we go west, can we go north on this? And in your, in your agenda today, one of the things that we're going to pursue with you is that we explore some property requirements related to expansion, and what, in committee, we started talking about the various aspects of this, and we felt we really can't go forward and start inquiring into property without you folks being informed as to what the master plan is in committee that's been discussed, and get your approval for us to move forward in exploring these other options. Jenny?
Brian, what is the daily parking capacity, like how, how many vehicles do we need to park each day?
Yeah, well, Mr. Chair, I have to say, that is a very good question, one that we need to probably take account of what our parking spaces are right now, and probably even visit with the city. And, you know, there's certain restrictions that you have to follow if you're going to build new office space, which we will be, jails, there's a formula for different office buildings, and the city will help us decide how many parking spaces we need around there, so that's a bit...
Bottom line is there isn't adequate parking right now for what we're doing.
No, I understand that, I was just wondering if there's a ballpark.
Jenny, the, for example, under this plan, when we build the new jail and in particular the new law enforcement center, and we should emphasize that this is a joint law enforcement center with the city of Morehead, at least that's how we're moving forward with this plan, because there appears to be interest on both parties to continue to share a law enforcement center. But the issue becomes, I think the parking regulations are defined already within the Morehead code, and so, for however, however many offices you may have, they're going to have a formula for how many stalls are needed. In retail, it's different, you know, you're going to have, you have to have so many, so we're going to have to meet the zoning requirements of the city of Morehead for parking, and right now, we know we cannot meet that without expand, without some sort of expansion.
I'm not debating that that needs to happen, I just am wondering, as, on a daily load in this campus, how many vehicles are here? That's my, was my question.
We'll answer that, that's a very good question, and because I'm sure the city's going to ask the same when we start looking at, if, if in fact the ramp goes forward, you know, do we have a two-level ramp, do we have a three-level ramp, because we can be fairly flexible. We sit right next to a building that's five levels, that houses from... We sit right next to a building that's five levels, that houses from four to 600 people.
Right.
So, we need a lot of parking to accompany that. So, anyway. So, with that in mind, I did, I, I would think that, and especially with, with our new commissioner, I do have some information here to talk about. And we have discussed this in the past, this isn't anything new, but it's been a little What, a couple, a couple of things. I think you're all aware that we have added $50,000 to the levy, starting in 2014, and our intentions were to add that for six years, for a total accumulation of $300,000 a year. That would take us up to about 2018 or 2022, I think, with the six years. We did, we are going to see some revenues from wind energy this year from the southwest, southeast corner of the county. And the county board, as of 2014, or was it even 2013, we passed a resolution that, you guys passed a resolution that 80% of that would be dedicated to the building fund for a jail, and that's going to be in the area of approximately $140,000 to $150,000. So, with, with those two items, we're up to about $440,000, $450,000 a year. Then, the third piece to the puzzle that the board decided on was, and that's in front of you, that right now, well, I should say in 2013, you'll see that, if you go to the year of 2013, and I'll move slowly on this, because I know these are hard to follow unless you're an accountant, and this comes out pretty easy. But us people that are not accountants, if you go to 2013, if you follow that over, you'll see in, up on top, it says in 2011, a GO Capital Improvement Bond, that's a bond we took out. In 2008, there was a capital improvement bond, and that shows the principal and the interest on it. And then there's a gap, because 2002, that Law Enforcement Bond was paid off when we refinanced with the 2011 bond, and that's why you'll see the gap. That no longer exists. And then you'll see the totals over here, the total principal and interest. Well, in 2013, the total interest and principal payment we were making was 1.416 million dollars. So, that's kind of the figure that we started with, that in 2013, we were making payments of 1.4 million dollars. And then as you go down, you'll see there's a line that's drawn under the 2017. Well, in 2018, we dropped to payments of $957,000. So, that's a gain of right around $400,000 from 2013. So, and then it progressively gets lower until 2022, when we make our final payment. So, the board decided that they would dedicate by resolution, so that's not, you know, that's not, that's the action that they took at that time, would dedicate 75% of that payment to pay out, pay the jail. And that would be just a little over a million dollars, a million point 06, if you had 75% of what the 2013 figure was. So, the idea was that million dollars plus the $450,000, we would be in the area of 1.4 million dollars, but that's not until 2022. But in 2018, it does start to accumulate. That's not enough. So, we're going to need to do some other things, and the Finance Committee will continue to work on that. We do have some ideas, we're looking at some public-private partnerships right now, that just came about at the Finance Committee this last time, some ideas in regards to that. We'll pursue that, bring some ideas to you on that. So, I guess the reason why I throw out the Finance piece, if we need to move forward with some parking and, and if we look at properties and things like that, don't feel that we, the committees haven't looked at how we're generating some cash flow in regards to it. So, I guess that's why I throw the Finance piece out. But today, what we're looking for from you folks, certainly entertain any questions, we want to bring you up to date on this, but we'd like a, a motion to authorize us to explore property requirements related to that. And that may mean out talking to some people, some neighbors, and different things as to the possibilities, but we wanted to do that with your total knowledge. Motions?
Oh, I have a question. As far as Morehead's involvement in this, I mean, they're part of the Law Enforcement Center.
Yes, they are.
I mean, that would be just a minor part of it, or the, I mean, do we own the building? Does Morehead, or do we own it together, or that Law Enforcement Center?
We occupy it together, yes.
Okay.
That is a safe response.
Yeah, there's always been some debate, too, but we're convinced we own that building, so.
Oh, okay, I mean, all right.
Mr. Chair, I was out of the room for a bit. Are you talking about possible property acquisitions south of Ninth Avenue North?
I've got to stop thinking, eighth, ninth is north.
Ninth, or north of.
North of Ninth Avenue.
North of Ninth Avenue.
North of Nineteenth, Ninth Avenue?
No, south of Ninth Avenue.
Well, okay, well, we own all of it south. This would be south of Ninth Avenue. Here's where the, here's where the Law Enforcement Center sits right now, here's where the courthouse is. So, you're saying north of Ninth Avenue?
Pardon me.
Okay.
I meant south of Ninth Street.
No. You mean over on this west side of it?
We can't go there.
The river's over there.
Yeah.
We have a part.
I'm a little bit shorn into here, so.
Yeah.
This is two-dimensional, that's tough on me.
Well, it's a lot, that's why we put up just the blank one, because a person has to kind of acclimate themselves to where it lies. But if you think of, the courthouse is right here, and then if you look just straight west, here's the Law Enforcement Center. And then, of course, the county, this is the county campus all in here right now. And you said south, this is Ninth Avenue up here, and are you saying possibly looking at properties up in here or something? We want to explore other, all options.
South of Seventh Avenue.
Okay, down here. Well, we, we may want to discuss that.
Okay, that's, that was my, I said Ninth Avenue North, I meant.
Seven, oh, now that means, okay.
So.
That's not our, that's not our preference right now.
It is, not right now.
No, 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 Mr. Ince, so that, that, you know, based on the committee in, in researching this, depending on, on what we may or may not do with the parking ramp issue, I think our, our, our more immediate concerns with, with parking would have to do with the elimination of so much parking to the north of the current Law Enforcement Center to allow for that new facility. So, so for now, I, our focus would be north of.
You're not looking at south of Seventh Avenue.
Not now, no, right now, right now, but, but again, we need to keep all options open in the future, but it, it is not the intent right now to look at that.
Thank you.
It's north of Ninth Avenue.
I'm curious, I said Ninth, I didn't mean so.
Okay, one of the board's witnesses.
Well, I, you know, and I, our committee has, has met on this, and there's, if, if you look at what we have to do to, for this campus and to stay on this campus, there's, there's no way we can accomplish it at all without having additional property for, for parking. And so, I, I think it's imperative for us to reach out to property owners to get their thoughts on it and their impressions on it before we move forward, and give them a chance to be heard. With that, I would move forward with the motion to have our staff enter into discussions with land needed for our project.
Mr. Chair, I'll second Kevin's motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All ayes aye, motion carries. Thank you.
And Mr. Chair, are there any other questions of the three commissioners that are on this committee? Because we, we want you folks to be as educated as possible, want you to come in and visit about this, visit with the other commissioners on this, because this is a big, big project, and it's been talked about for a long time, and, and we want the public to understand the needs of it, but we certainly want you people that are going to be voting on this as it moves forward. And I, we, we sense that there is a need to move this forward.
And we'll have more information as we move forward, so ongoing, so.
I know, I mean, I, I know we're limited on space and stuff like that, but, and I know this plan isn't finalized, it's far from being finalized.
Far from.
Are we looking at all for garages, for our vehicles and all, I mean, I mean, that's got to be another.
It's one of the things that's being discussed.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I, and maybe I can, you know, one of our, there seems to be a, a real concern on behalf of Morehead PD, and in some instances, the, our, our Sheriff's Department, with the massive investment that they have in squad cars now, with, with all of the equipment that's in them, that they need to be inside. One of the things that we're going to look at is, we're going to be looking at where the Law Enforcement Center is, is having the main floor. We don't want to go underground, but we're looking at a potential of a main floor inside parking with then two stories above that being potential for.
Very good, okay.
Yeah, so that, that's, that's just one of the things that we're discussing.
I mean, I realize we're talking future.
Yeah, there's, there's so many, none of this is, you know, but we are, but we are looking at it.
Yeah, I feel they should be housed inside of the camp.
Yeah. There's a lot of, lot of dollars involved to be sitting outside when it's 40 below.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. City of Morehead requests to purchase temporary construction easement. Tim?
We're going to make this really short and sweet.
That's the way we want it.
I could make it even shorter.
We have a piece of tax forfeit property. They're doing a milliner lay on Main Avenue from Eighth Street up to Nineteenth Street, all the way up to the Tasty Freeze. They, their contractor had requested this temporary easement from the county, and in doing just a little bit of research, I found that as of the first of the year, the city is now the owner of that property. They took eight or nine tax forfeit properties from the state at the last auction, and they're now city properties. So, the property's now owned by the city, we don't have to take an action on this. Well.
Short enough.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Thanks, Tim.
Next is approval of Phase Two Environmental Assessment. Kirk Rosenberger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning. Morning, Kirk.
Hope the night will be brief as well.
Good morning.
Good morning. And I'd like to just basically talk a little bit about what we're proposing to do today. Essentially, what we're trying to do is, is that, as we've talked about, the, there's a proposed facility that we're talking about doing a transfer station, relocating a transfer station, relocating the problem materials facility, and building a new single-sort MRF facility up on Highway 75. And it's on the site of the old Morehead Dump. And so, the purpose of this request is to, to go in and do some soil borings on the site to ensure that we don't, the footprint of the proposed facility will not encroach upon the old Morehead Dump. So, what they're going to be doing is a series of soil borings to determine the, the boundary of the old landfill, or old dump, rather, and also to determine the stability of the soil to ensure that we can build on that particular site. I sent out IRP to three different engineering companies, I've worked with all three of them. The best proposal I got back as far as thoroughness and response to the request is from Burns McDonald, they're out of the Twin Cities, and their request is for $21,500, which I think is very reasonable. So, with that, I ask that you approve this particular motion.
Mr. President?
Mr. Chair.
Good morning.
Kirk, how long did it take them to do this?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, it, they hope to be done in a week or less.
Seems like that's a pretty reasonable amount, a week's work and people staying up here. I'll, I will move to approve what Kirk is asking.
I'll second that motion.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Well, I, I just think the record should show too, that, that move, you know, for us to move forward, even with the potential request for the state grant agreements to help fund this, we, you know, we need to know before we really get going on that, that the site that we're looking at would be appropriate. So, I'd hate to see us not go through and get the grants and then find out our land isn't the right place, so this is the right thing to do.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All ayes aye, motion carries.
I have one other item here, just very, very briefly, I just wanted to talk about this. Clay County's going to be in the news again, this is positive stuff. March 4th, Valley News Live will be doing ASHOT. I'm going to pass this around, it's part of the RAM newsletter. RAM Newsletter is a recycling association in Minnesota. And essentially, Clay County, Shannon Thompson had worked really, really hard to develop these relationships, and it's with Recycling Alliance of Minnesota, Heartland Industries, which is a, for developmentally challenged individuals, it's a vocational center. Minkota was our recycler, City of Fargo, Holiday Station and Petrol Serve. And essentially, what we're going to be doing is we're going to be putting some bottles out, plastic bottles, large plastic bottles, for people to be able to recycle their cans and bottles. It's a pretty simple, stupid way for people to try and take advantage of recycling, so I feel pretty positive about this effort. But the other part I feel pretty good about is the number of people that are involved in this partnership. You know, we try wherever we can to try and work with partners. Certainly, the project we're talking about, as far as the, the MRF, we're talking to a number of partners, and this is just one other example.
Mr. Chair.
Perfect, thank you.
Kirk, I think this is maybe kind of an offshoot of the Take Jack Back, and that was very successful, and.
Mr. Chairman, I, I agree, I hope we have the same kind of success that we did with the Take Jack Back, I, I think it's a real positive thing.
Well done, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. Did you seek out these people and these businesses just in Fargo and Morehead, or have businesses come to you as they've heard about it?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I, I believe, and I'm not as in tune on this particular project, but I believe that RAM, the Recycling Association of Minnesota, was the one that secured the businesses. Again, obviously, we'd be interested in doing things outside metro Morehead area, so, you know, I think that for a pilot project, this is a fairly good start.
Good work.
Thank you, Kirk.
Thank you.
Mr. Morrow.
Yes.
Okay, Dave's next, he's not here yet. Do you want to do your reports, Wayne?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. On Tuesday, February 17th, local advisory council of adult mental health, general business, consumer concerns, there were none, agency reports from several, Department of Human Services by the LAC, by the Local Advisory Council's co-chair, Allison Waldeck, Clay County Social Services from SERP, from Solutions, from ARMS, the acronym for Adult Mental Health Rehabilitation Service, report from Place for Hope, that used to be called the Social Connection, TransM, which is again an acronym for Transitional Employment, Lakeland Mental Health, FM Ambulance, and Summit, which works with many schools throughout the county. On Thursday, February 19th, Lake Agassy Regional Library Executive Committee Meeting, general business, then we spent a lot of discussion on the upcoming library legislative day to be held on March 3rd in St. Paul. Library funding and possible changes in funding formulas will be the central topics presented to our legislators. On February 21st, again for Lake Agassy Regional Library, the Northern Lights Library Network held its board meeting, general business for education, we have budgeted over $20,000 for librarians, peer professionals, and others connected to libraries to receive scholarships to attend related activities and meetings throughout our 23-county district for Northern Lights Library Network. There were also other items that were part of the meeting. At 11 o'clock, Northern Lights Library Network held its second annual library luncheon with legislators. Senator Ken Eakin, Representative Ben Lean, and Representative Bud Nornus from Otterdale County were in attendance. About 30 others representing the 30, 23-county area, Northern Lights were also present, and it was very successful and went very well. And that's my report, Mr. Chair.
Frank?
On Thursday, we had an FM COG meeting. It's one of the main things we had there, we had, we got a senior planner position open, we offered it to a guy. We offered it to a guy. He eventually turned the position down because of, what I thought was interesting reason was the high cost of housing in this area. You know, he didn't think by selling his house, he could come out ahead of, you know, even I thought we were giving a good salary and stuff like that. That was one of the main reasons that he did not accept the position, you know. So in the meantime, we have offered it to the second person on the end. Well, I don't know, I guess they were very close at the beginning, and he has accepted the position, so that was one of the main things at the COG meeting. Friday morning, we went to Partnership for Health, excuse me, Partnership for Health meeting down at Barnesville. There Gina Nolte gave a presentation on all the things that are, Partnership for Health is involved in, all the grants that they're getting and stuff like that. She gave a very good presentation on, I mean, there are so many different things that Partnership and Health, you know, that, I mean, this combination of these four counties getting together, all the different services that they are providing to the, to the counties, and it was a very good presentation that she gave, and very informative. After that, on Friday, I went to, back to FM COG. There we had a training session for people as they're getting involved in COG, just to let them know where's all this funding coming from. And you know, and all of a sudden, you get the trust fund allocations, allotments, distributions, authorizations, you know, how it all works together, you know, where the funding gets together for the FM COG, you know. And I think there must have been around, I don't know, eighteen, twenty people there at this FM COG, I mean, Metro COG is really, people are starting to get involved in it, they're seeing where all these funds are coming from, what they're doing for this area that, that we really need, that type of funding, you know, and it is really helping out the community. Monday, yesterday, went to Fergus Falls. Jenny and I were down there for the Lakeland Mental Health, and we were sitting together, we were discussing the report, and we're just amazed at all the grants that they get. I mean, they're not talking about fifty thousand dollar grants, they're talking about nine-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grants, eight-hundred-thousand-dollar grants, all the stuff that this Lakeland Mental Health, you know, sometimes we don't realize how much these people that are involved in it, like Partnership for Health, Lakeland Mental Health, how they all work in the county, and I don't know, sometimes I think we're not getting all this information out to the county. I'm sure they're doing, they're doing their best, but it's just amazing what all these programs are doing for the county. Last night, I went to Holly. Tom and Jennifer put on the thing, the Holly Leach and Club invited them down there to tell what's available for veterans. There's around twenty people there, and Tom and Jennifer put on one heck of a program, telling them what's available for veterans. And it was just, I mean, it was about a two-hour program presentation of all the stuff that's available for veterans, you know, and it just made me think of, you know, Tom's going out there and doing this, you know, and sometimes we think, well, why aren't there more people at the meetings here and stuff like that? And I realize we got it on TV, they can see it there and stuff like that, you know, but it was really, I thought it was really a good thing that Tom is doing, going out to the people, you know, should we doing that with other departments, you know, should, I don't know, treasurer, assessors, auditors, should they be going out there and tell them what their departments are doing, you know, and stuff like that? But I really want to compliment Tom and Jennifer, they put on a good program.
Thank you. Kevin?
Well, as we've discussed this morning already, we did have a jail finance planning meeting that Brian gave a good recap on today. I, you know, we continue to look at timetables and funding options, and we'll keep studying those and hopefully come up with some plan pretty soon. I, you know, I think one of the things that we, we did talk about at the meeting was at some point in time, I think we need to make it clear within, within the county that, that this really is a high priority for, for our county, that we need to do this. The ramifications for not doing it are severe, and, you know, moving forward as quickly as we possibly can while at the same time being sure of ourselves and what we're doing is extremely important. I think we're, we're well on our way to a good financial plan, but I think at some point in time, we're gonna, we're gonna have to, as a board, sit down and say, yes, we're building this, or no, we're not, and let the community know. And then, and then it's gonna come down to maybe some options for them in terms of what, what ways to fund it. And, but, but I think it's, it's clear, and, and, you know, we, we can't kid ourselves, there's many other projects going on by, by different agencies throughout our county, and we need to be, you know, concerned or understanding of those needs, but, but this is one from a county perspective that's incredibly important. And, and the Law Enforcement Center is as well. You know, Morhead is also faced with, if they can't have it here, they're gonna do, put it someplace. And so it's, it's best if we can collaborate and do it jointly, it'd be best for all parties. So from that standpoint, I hope we can, this board can make some decisions sooner rather than later regarding that facility. And then, the solid waste advisory committee meeting, SWAC meeting was held on last Thursday morning, and it was, it was quite a packed meeting. It was probably one of the longer ones we've had in quite some time. We heard a presentation from Max Milankovic. He is from Full Circle Organics, and he's interested in, in taking and starting up a organics recycling thing in Clay County, and starting off primarily with brush and grasses and those types of things. And if so, he's looking, he'd be looking at wanting to potentially lease some county property. One of the sites we're looking at is our Riverton property, which, you know, we, we have a lot of land there, but we also asked to review all of the other county lands that we have in the county to see if there'd be another area. And that, that also, if that were to come through, that would also eliminate the need for Morhead to have their compost site on Highway seventy-five. It would save, it would save the city some dollars in terms of, on their budget with manpower, that it currently now has to staff and run that compost site. And the neat thing about this too is the end result of the product, it's, it's sold back to typically what they've done throughout the state of Minnesota where they operate is it's sold back to the ag community for fertilizer. And it's, they sell it back at, obviously at a rate that's farmers are interested in. So, but that's, Brian, and maybe when you give your report, if you can think of anything more about that, but that was, that was really interesting. That was the first meeting we had on that. And we got the final feasibility study report from URS from Jay Leach, and that is on our, our proposed three projects, the transfer station, the MRF, and the household hazardous waste facility. And again, you know, we had prices ranging from seven million to sixteen million, and seven million would never happen, neither would the sixteen million, but someplace in between there. And then we're looking at, out of that, probably six million in grants coming from the state of Minnesota. So it would be, and those funds, but those projects would all be funded through the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund. So that would, that one would not see have any impact on property tax issues for our county citizens. There could be some rate issues down the road. So that's, and then Shannon Thompson continues to work on waste education. She did table that, that on this one because her meeting was going so long, but Shannon, I think, is doing a really good job. And as you talked about, Jenny, you asked the questions regarding what was just presented to us about those tub, those bottles being put at some of our, our local, I think that is just a really neat deal, and hopefully we'll see more of those types of things happen as well. But the, I think the thing that, community-wise, on this whole solid waste project, is that MRF. I think there is a lot of interest from a lot of people in seeing single sort, going to a single sort waste management system. It's much easier for the consumer, and yet we can still reduce what goes into our landfill and then have a way to bring income in by selling some of the product that we take to recycling. That's enough.
Just take off a little bit of what Kevin is saying on that, on the jail project, you
know. I think that's another situation where we gotta get out to the county. I know it's too early to do it yet. You know, we, we don't even have a plan yet. I mean, we've got, we're working on a plan. But I think once we've got some sort of plan established, I think we gotta go out and have some sort of informational meetings at different areas in the county, you know, to let the people know what, what are we looking at, you know, not just, and I realize we're on, we're available to county, and they can come to meetings, they can see it on television, but sometimes, like I said, just last night, it just gave me, when we go out there to the people, letting them know what's going on.
And I, I think.
And probably that's in the plan, I don't know.
Commissioner Gross, I, I think you'll, you'll find that, that we want to make sure we have all our i's dotted and t's crossed, and then we, we do intend to do that. We intend to go out to all of the municipalities, the local, not only the City of Morhead, the City Council, but also the Barnesville and Holly and Dilworth and all those places. We're looking at going to service clubs and explaining to them what we're doing. We're looking at business associations, whether they're in Morhead or Barnesville, and trying to get everybody on board with this.
You're way out ahead of me. Thank you.
All right.
Jenny?
Last Wednesday, I attended the Historical and Cultural Society meeting where we discussed memberships, January and February is always a big month to talk about renewing memberships for people who may have forgotten about it. And kind of piggybacking off that idea, we talked about having an annual event for our members, defining what, who are our members, and what, what do members mean to us, and having an event like that to show our appreciation would probably go over well. Also, we've started to sell videos online, and that's continued to be a good thing, and so just wanted to spread the word that, that those are available on their website. Thursday, I attended the Metro COG meeting. Frank touched that fairly well. I appreciate the partnership that we have with all the different entities at the table. There are a full room of community and county leaders, and that's a, a great thing to have as we move forward. I also attended the Morhead Business Association, social networking. I appreciate the invitation to network with area businesses and hear their concerns and, and feedback. Friday, I also attended the federal funding training for highway funding with Frank. It was a great presentation. I, I realized that it was a two-day training that they condensed into two hours, so I appreciate them bringing that in to help kind of clear up any questions that those of us may have. And yesterday, I attended the annual meeting in Fergus Falls for the Lakeland Mental Health, where they recap the, the great resources that they continue to have countywide. I think there's six counties that, that are involved with that, and they just continue to grow. There's a great need, and I think they're doing a good job of addressing some of the needs in, in our area that may have gotten unnoticed for a while. Then we had the board meeting where we discussed ways to continue to look for ways to make appointments available and easy for people to get to. Sometimes with diseases, that's difficult to, to get people to their appointments, and I feel like their staff is really looking for all ways to, to make it available. Just also want to mention what Commissioner Gross had about the amazing amount of grants that are available and that they're utilizing, and, and it is a great tool. And that is all. I have, Commissioner.
Okay, let's see, I had jail finance meeting. Kevin already talked about that. I had a county agency and agent meeting in Glendon, and with Clay County seniors, and just some discussion on some of the functions they've got coming up throughout the rest of the year, naming a Senior of the Year. They're looking for nominations for that, and they talked about a senior dance they have in Glendon in June, and I think last year they had a hundred and approximately twenty-five people there, so they're hoping to have it even bigger this year. Yesterday, Brian and I met with the sheriff's office and the regional dispatch center representative about the armor system we're moving towards and some of the funding issues that we're going to be dealing with. And the good news, we're talking about a lot of money, but the good news is, is that they've got everything pretty well planned out, and looks like it's gonna be a pretty painful transition in the next couple of years, so. And that was it for me. Every week, you're hobbling a little better, so, yeah.
I won't be running up here. You won't do that.
If you want to pass this round, one set of maps.
Thanks.
That's for my item number one.
Okay.
Okay. Every year, we need to get a certain amount of bridges that we plan to replace on a, on a resolution list, and then we submit those to MINDOT. It's on their master list, so they know how to plan for the bridge bonds that they allocate to counties as well as the township bridge fund. So this is our 2015 to 2019 deficient bridge list. The first map in resolution, I guess, to be approved would be for county and county-state aid roads. So what we do is every year, our bridge inspector has to inspect all the bridges within the county. Some are on a little bit different rotation, like the culverts, he can do those, those big box culverts, those are on a four-year rotation. Some bridges are on every other year, and a lot of the bridges are on every year. So after our bridge inspector goes out and does his inspection reports and updates the condition ratings, then we put together a resolution list based on what we're seeing. So the tendency, what we mostly see is, is the bridges, you know, if we have one planned for 2014 and the condition doesn't change, we kind of just ratchet it down. So for the most part, most of the bridges just kind of get moved on the list. Some move up and down a little bit, but not a lot. So for the most part, the list isn't that much different than last year. On the county system, probably our, our next bridge that we're looking at doing would be replacing a bridge with a box culvert in Glendon on County Road 117. We've also got, got one on County Road 57 that we, we did move that one down to 2016. The reason you don't see any 2015 projects on the resolution is the bridge bond funds pretty much got eliminated within a very short time. There was a couple of big bridges down in Minneapolis area that take, I think, twenty-five of the forty million, so a big chunk of that, that forty million gets eaten up with a couple of big bridges. They've got needs down there, but I'm also involved in the Minnesota County Engineers' Bridge Committee, and what we're trying to do is figure out how we can handle some of these, these what we call budget buster type bridges, you know, should there be a separate bond allocation just for those? And we don't really want to dirty it up, so I guess, I think our hope is that maybe we just get that number a little bit bigger, try to get in that sixty million. If they're gonna take some big bridges out of there, so, you know, otherwise you're splitting fifteen million with eighty-seven counties, and it just doesn't go very far.
Dave, aren't we talking several thousand bridges alone just in Minnesota?
Correct.
Yeah, and forty, fifty, sixty million dollars is a pittance, isn't it? When you start looking at that?
Yeah, when one bridge takes twenty-five of the forty million right off the top, so. The program does work good, though. The people from MINDOT, they administer it, they do a one heck of a good job, so.
Okay. Dave, the, the scheduling that you have on these, is it, is it a combination of priority and cost, or is it pretty much priority?
Pretty much priority.
Good, okay.
Okay, the board wishes on item number one.
Heightened move approval.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. Okay, number two, Dave.
All right, second item is approval to advertise and ultimately open bids for a county Highway 52 surfacing project. I can't remember if I brought this information to the board or not, but our whole plan all the way along was to do concrete paving on this section. Since we recently found out that the cement price has gone sky-high, we did redesign a little bit, and we're gonna have an alternate. So we're gonna bid it as betumis or concrete, and then from there, we're gonna take the most practical price, something that we can afford. So what we'd like to do is we'd like to open bids on, on Friday, March twentieth, right up here at nine o'clock. That way it'll give us a couple of days to, it's similar to what we did on County Road 11. I think we did an alternate bid there, and we analyzed it, and then we brought it back, our recommendation. we analyzed it, and then we brought our recommendation back to the board, so, we would actually bring it to the board for approval on March 24th, but the bid opening itself would be on March 20th, and there's actually three alternates, there's a concrete driving lanes with batuminous shoulders, there's concrete driving lane, concrete shoulders, and then batuminous shoulders, and the whole works, driving lanes and shoulders, so we, we kind of have a couple of different alternatives to kind of weigh out a little bit and, and see how things are gonna come in.
Okay.
And this will continue it all the way to South of Baker, correct?
Correct, yep, yep, County Road 21, I think it is, from where we left off in 2008, yeah, yep, so we've got about two and a half miles of new paving, so there's gravel out there, so that'll be new concrete paving, then we got about another two miles or so of an overlay, so we'll mill off the asphalt down to the existing panels like we did before, and it'll either be a batuminous overlay, a black overlay, or a concrete overlay.
This has all been through committee.
It's part of, it's part of our five-year plan.
I'll move to approve.
Motion to approve, we have a second.
Second.
Second motion in second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries. Thanks, Dave.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dave is here right now, and, and one of the meetings that we started out last week was with the soil and water league, and, and I mentioned that during the report of the jail report, but I think they've taken all the samples now, and they'll do the testing, and give us a report here. Right, okay, great, so, we had a meeting on that, and picked out locations, we talked about locations, and then we're gonna go to campus. I had a diversion hardship meeting, work continues on planning for the diversion, also a lot of work going on in the city of Fargo, and, and of course, south of there to shore up and to increase the flows through town, and you've heard some things on the news of the Howard Johnson, and, and the other buildings along there that are being bought out in order to build those dikes through town, but I guess I just wanted to remind people that there are, there are still other subcommittees that are going on, and, and one is a hardship committee, we had two cases come in, and they were, they were health issues, very serious health issues, and, and the people needed to sell, so, we're, we're really fortunate that, that the diversion is doing that for people that, that don't have other places to turn, and there's still the situation of undetermined, and, and we need budgets for that, so, I just wanted to remind everyone of that issue. We had a jail finance planning meeting, we've talked enough about that, I think, the solid waste meeting, Commissioner Campbell asked me to expand on that just a little tiny bit. One, one, they're gonna start out with brush and branches and different things, but the idea is to collect also the, the byproducts, or the products that, that come from schools and grocery stores and different things, and, yes, and put those back out on the field once you compost them and turn them, and things along those lines, and with that, too, also the, that's a private partner, public partnership to try to recycle that, but the other one is the single sort of, of working with Menkota or, or other entities that, that may wanna enter into an agreement, so that it doesn't, it isn't all public funds that are going for this, this is products that will be collected and, and separated, and then packaged, baled, and sold, and again, you start hearing more about the public-private partnership, and I think that's a very fine example of that, we're, we're going to be looking at those options in the jail as well, we're looking at them in solid waste, we're looking at them in a diversion, they're looking at them in many different areas now. Had a diversion administrative advisory meeting also last week, you know, a lot of things to discuss there and move forward with. We had a central administration, administration management meeting last Thursday as well, I had a meeting with the city and the school district, reference planning, your Monday night meeting, remember, you guys will be meeting with the boards from the school and the, and the city of Morehead on Monday night.
This Monday?
Next coming Monday.
This coming Monday.
Where will that be again?
That's YIMCOM Center.
Yeah.
At seven o'clock. Some, some time spent on personnel issues, again, had a meeting with Brian Milton, referenced some charges that Lutheran Family Services is now charging for time coming to court, and prep time for coming to court and things, and they haven't done that in the past, and wondering about budgets and different things along those lines. Had a discussion, just going back to the jail thing, I had spent some time on the phone with, with a finance firm in regards to discussing our possibilities of, of finance, and hopefully that'll, that'll move along. Attended new hire orientation, we had four yesterday for new hire orientation, and they're held monthly, and then Commissioner Wayland talked about the armor meeting, the, that's the radio system, and how that went, it went quite well, and then just a couple more little things here, one that Jenny contacted me on, I forwarded an email to you folks, and I'm assuming there's no objection to it, but they wanted to make sure that they had permission from the Historical Society to give you a monthly mailing, just to keep you up to date, and I'm sure everybody's okay with that, so we'll let them know that.
Still the product.
Yeah, and then the other thing that, that we talked a little bit about is that there's, there's some discussion about ditching issues and attending the watershed meetings, and, you know, we have liaison people that, that go ahead and attend Soil and Water, I think that's a good example, they're not a voting member, but we have a board member that attends that and communicates with those different, but yet, we don't have anybody on the Buffalo Red watershed, and we really don't have a person assigned as a liaison person, I don't believe, on the committees of that, so, I talked about Buffalo Red Water Ditch Coordinating, Wild Rice Watershed Ditch Advisory Board, Water Rice Shed Flood Reduction, and Project Team slash Project Team, and all of those things, they're very important to the county, and we have, you assign people to those managers, but we don't have any liaison with that, and we were just kind of in an informal discussion, wanted to bring that to the board and see if you folks want to have more direct involvement with those, and have people at those meetings from your board.
Kevin?
Mr. Chairman, Brian, thank you for bringing that up, I, I, you know, that is, the water projects, whether it's through the Buffalo Red or the Wild Rice in the northern part of our county, those are important issues to all of us, and it appears, you know, it seems to me that whoever we have that might be on the Buffalo Red River Ditch Coordinating Committee, or whoever would be on the Wild Rice Committee, should also then be allowed to, whenever possible, to attend the actual watershed meetings, and I think it's important then that this board gets a report on the activities that go on. I personally get the minutes of all the Buffalo Red meetings, but sometimes that, that doesn't do it justice compared to what really goes on in the meeting, and so I, I firmly believe, and I, I think Jenny, you're on the Buffalo Red one, and I-
Commissioner Gross and I are on the Wild Rice one.
Yeah, and I, I, what I would like to see us do is to have that become, obviously, you would have nothing to do with the voting and those things, but, but being there on behalf of the county, the county board, and then to come back, and, and I think we should add it as a committee assignment with per diem, and I would make that motion to do so.
You got a motion, do we have a second? Have a motion in second, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries.
Thank you for bringing that up.
You're welcome. Who, who, who? We've got an owl here.
Oh, you need to-
Yeah, who's on what?
So I'm on Wild Rice.
First watershed representative, so.
Yeah, Frank is on Sound and Genius.
Yeah, and the whole idea there is that they, they attend whatever watershed meetings they can and come back and give us a report.
Brian, anything else?
Well, just one other issue in regards to that, planning and zoning is one of our most, well, it's, all of our committees are important, but planning and zoning is a big issue, and you folks do just have one commissioner assigned to that, you do not have even an alternate identified, and you have some pretty big issues that come up from time to time, and that was along with one of our discussions to bring up to you, do you want to assign an alternate to that committee that attends on when they can or something?
Who's on it now? Jenny?
Yeah.
Anybody wanna be the alternate, right?
Sure.
Okay.
No, I, you know what, I, there's some times when, there's, there's some times where I know where we've done things, where, or counties have done things where any commissioner can serve as an alternate, you know, so, you know, you could also do that, so that we're not put in a position that, you know, it's one or the other, and if both can't, then you're still out of luck, you know, so, this might be one that we could just state that all of us would be alternates, in, in the event that Jenny can't make it.
And that would be with per diem.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I would like to be an alternate with Jenny on the Wild Rice.
I'm on Wild Rice.
I'm the alternate.
You're the alternate.
Yeah, we've got two on the Wild Rice.
Thank you.
Okay, so that, a motion on the planning commission then, for all?
Yeah, I, I would, you know, I would just-
I'll second.
You know, but, but there has to be coordination, but, but they are public meetings, so it wouldn't matter, you know, but, yeah.
Probably just a matter of Jenny can't make it.
Right, she can contact, keep going down the list until she gets somebody.
But I also appreciate the fact that I think that you raise a valid point, that the planning and zoning comes, has big issues, and all of us need to have an informative stance if we wanted to attend meetings.
Sure. Okay, so we've got a motion in a second, and that's to have Jenny as the representative, and all other commissioners as alternates on that committee, any further discussion?
That's the Clay County Planning-
Clay County Planning Commission. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, that completes my report.
That's it, anything else?